We did finish the facility plan about a year ago, Tim, a little more than a year ago. D E M approved it. It was kind of lagged a little. It lagged about a year past what we thought it would to get their final approval. And we did actually come to the council in October of last year and give a formal presentation for kind of how this wrapped. It very much like they had a mitigation plan that you just heard about. Your sewer facility plan is something that we update every five years. D E M won't let you continue to use funding if you don't keep it active. So they kind of take us off their list as soon as we drop out of five years. So that's probably, you know, the fifth time we've done an update of that plan and modified it each time to try to customize. The thing that changes with sewers a lot is while development occurs all the time, in a five-year period, the shape of Coventry tends to change a little bit. So we try to adapt the infrastructure to take advantage of the fact that you want to stay modern with that plan and how things go. And honestly, plans are great when they're living type of documents and they can be adapted quickly. So you try to adapt with the times. Following the issues that came about with your Contract Seven, we had started design of Contract Eight, which was up in Quitnick Village, up off of Washington. And we actually held that back. The sewer subcommittee decided at that time we should kind of put the halt on the sewer program. And that was circa 2011, 2012 or so. And we kind of went through a hiatus period as you finished Contract Seven, where there was some questions as to how we would proceed. But we did end up, the town did end up with some extra funding that was available from D E M that had already been committed. And so with that as the driver over the past few years, we've been looking at how to revitalize the town's program and at the same time take advantage of that funding. So one of two big drivers that's happened recently with the sewer program was the availability of that funding to the tune of some $2.4 million in bonding from a state revolving fund program. The second thing that's happened that has kind of pushed us to where we are right now is the town's decision to reconstruct Arnold Road. And the need to think about the moratorium and when we start to reconstruct roadways, we're going to need to eventually put sewers in them, the idea of having forethought to make sure we do that in time. So with that as the backdrop, we've actually been moving pretty quickly through this year with a couple of projects. Earlier this year, we put the finishing touches on the northern end of Arnold Road. That project takes advantage of that, some of that available funding that was out there. The reason we could do that is because it was on the priority list with the D E M. So we're taking advantage of that one. That project's just about to be wrapped. We have a little engineering work to do with ready drawings and things, Tim. They did that quickly to get ahead of the reconstruction. And as you talked about earlier in the meeting, now the reconstruction project is going through that same area. We are just now wrapping up, probably this week, maybe into next week, Tim?
Yeah, they're hoping to be at the end of this week that all the pipe will be in the ground, the southern end of Arnold Road.
So just getting ready to wrap the southern end of Arnold Road. A little different issue, the town had to do some specialized funding for that because it wasn't eligible for D E M funding. So Northern Arnold Road essentially done, Southern Arnold Road done pretty quickly. About a month ago, I was in front of you to talk about Hazard Street. We had just recently bid a small sewer project up on Hazard Street. That was originally part of that Quitnick project that we did. It's been a piece of design that's been on the shelf for a while. We brought that back, modernized the design a little bit, and now we bid and we have a contractor ready to start in a couple of weeks.
Looking gradual, everything.
Right. So getting really close to starting another third little project. That project will again take advantage of the S R F money that's coming up. On the heels of that, we've been in design for two different areas. One is the Coventry Drive area, which we've talked about. Obviously, we need to talk about whether you want to proceed with that, but probably by the time we meet, we'll have the design essentially complete and ready to go. Doesn't mean we can't hold it for a little bit or discuss timing, but we're in the middle, pretty much towards the end of the design on that. The second one is a piece of what was originally supposed to be done when we did the initial contract up near Tyob Lake. And it's actually the Wendell Ave area. It's actually landlocked by the river of the Salt Branch, by Sandy Bottom Road and by Tyob Ave. And so it's just a little area down there, very wet, down along the road line, properties down by the road. The actual spillway from Tyob Lake kind of crosses through that area. And it's always been an area we've needed sewers, just hasn't been done yet at this point in time. So that one is also essentially, design is just about to be complete for that. On the heels of that, we expect with those projects, we will utilize all the available funding from D E M. D E M, in order to allow us to build the dry pieces of sewer that we put at the southern end of Arnold Road, has asked that we, the town, to commit to building Brighter Point. And Brighter Point area is essentially the West Shore Drive area. It's the area adjacent to Arnold Road, between Arnold Road and Tyob Lake, south of the Causeway. And so again, a very low-lying, wet area where septic systems are essentially in contact with groundwater folks and had trouble putting septic systems in. It was always a very high priority area from an environmental standpoint for the town and the facility plan. And so we've committed to that and we're just beginning, just commencing now design of that area because we thought that that would get built next year. We have requested funding availability from the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank through Rhode Island D E M's S R F program. And we expect to have that available as we get into next year for that project. So at this point, that kind of wraps up everything we have on the books right now. The main questions that are going to be out there are what order do we proceed with things? And again, the goal right now is the Infrastructure Bank and D E M have asked us to use that $2.4 million. Essentially, it was 2013 bond money. And we're one of the last communities still trying to tap that money at this time. That's kind of a nutshell of those questions we can do then.
If I could say, I know years ago, I was on the sewer subcommittee. That was 2008, '09 out to 2010. I know that we have two other council people that are sewer subcommittee. And I know it's been a work, a level of labor and need in weighing the cost versus where they could be best put and what costs effectively put. A lot of the streets you mentioned are all in my district and I'm well aware of failing systems around Lake Tyob for sure. Just a general question, I know, you know, it might be a good idea to have a workshop for the people on Coventry Drive, but if you could just tell us, why was that targeted? I know the sewer subcommittee members might know there was a reason that that was targeted. You know, not asking if people wanted it or not. It was chosen and could you tell us a reason more? Why?
Yeah, so the background on the facility plan, there's a couple of reasons, actually.
Yes, I know that. I just know what I ventilated.
The general background of the facility plan is that the facility plan discusses what areas Coventry needs sewers.
Yes.
Not who wants sewers.
Exactly.
We did, when we did the original facility plan, actually do a questionnaire that solicited things like opinion, who wants sewers in one area. The challenge with seoring is you can never cost-effectively or logistically put sewers in when everybody on the street wants sewers. Because everybody's septic systems fail at a different rate. They fail at different times. Somebody has a new one, somebody has an old one, somebody has a fairly mid-level one that's just lagging by, someone's has absolutely failed and desperately needs it today. As you do a profile on every given street in Coventry, you get that exact profile across these. And it happens in every other community too, it's not just that street. So you can't plan sewers to be available at the exact time everybody on the street needs it. The second part of the equation is sewers are expensive and we have to then send bills to folks to pay for them. So you do have to plan these programmatically. So the facility plan actually lays out programmatically, area by area, that we will extend sewers into over time, measuring the fact that those areas will eventually need sewers from an environmental standpoint, that they actually probably need sewers because their systems will eventually fail even if they're not failing today, and that in general, they're cost-effective. And that isn't a measure of individual cost-effective person. So people individually can certainly come and they'll have better information for themselves, but we look at broader cost-effectiveness. So if you look at that really voluminous facility plan that we keep updating, all those factors are addressed in there and then we lay out a program. So all the areas we've talked about extending sewers in, all the areas we've been extending sewers into, and the areas we're proposing to are part of that facility plan. They go in kind of with a relative priority rank. And the particular question that we had that's come up in the Coventry Drive area case, Coventry Drive is one of, it's a part of an area, just like Arnold Road has been part of an area. That part of an area has a special reason why we're advancing it. In the case of Coventry Drive, it's part of an area where there is very high ground on the table. There is certainly long-established need to extend sewers. It's been a part of the facility plan for a long time. On top of that, we looked at cost-effectiveness for that neighborhood. We can serve it all by gravity, we don't need pump stations. It was selected as part of one of the options that we could do when we went into, you know, what can we do with this money? One of the reasons we moved it up is because the town also has a problem with the failing pavement systems in that neighborhood. And so D P W has been looking, trying to patch that along. They've done some practicing up there, but the worry is that that road is only going to hold together for a little bit more. So the goal is again, similar to Arnold Road, before we get up there and really pave that street and spend some money on repairing the paving, we'd really like to get the sewers in the ground. Because if we don't, we're going to have to skip that road for a long time. So there's a little bit of a balance, a logistical that goes into equalities?
It's the need and the cost. And then the decision is made, not always popular. The question is need for the environmental purposes and the lake and the cost. If it's, you know, least expensive or lesser expensive to go that individual street because of need and cost, that's what the sewer subcommittee sits on. And the experts talk, but again, it's nice to communicate and get the word out, but it's not on who wants it and who doesn't. It's not a popularity vote.
Correct.
And that's a hard decision. And in some, you know, the town has to bite the bullet sometimes.
Yeah, we didn't randomly draw that street name out of the park.
I understand, but sometimes people don't. And again, I understand because it's my area too. Okay. Yes, Mr.?
Kate did a great job explaining, you know, the reason why. I'm a member of the sewer subcommittee.
Yeah, I know you are.
I know it's not, you know, popular, a lot of these sewer lines go in front of people's houses, but it's not going to get any cheaper. And I mean, did a good job explaining to her and it'd be great if you could, you know, if you set up a work session, you could come out and help us explain to the people, you know, because they have legitimate concerns, I understand that. But, you know, it was explained well. And like you said, if the longer we wait, it's not going to get any cheaper, you know? So I appreciate that, thank you.
No, I think you need to listen to people's concerns, but we need to give a chance to give them some information as to that exact thing. I think that I just had.
Just, not another question, but just another statement from the sewer subcommittee that part of the explanation, we mentioned the cost of the facilities, the fact that what we discussed is trying to pair up certain projects where, for instance, on the Hazard Street and that area on Quitnick where it's all rock-based as opposed to sand-based areas, and I'm trying to pair up some of those. So it just brings the cost down for those particular projects instead of doing all of that one where the cost would be astronomical. So that's what they're trying to do, some of that cost difference in any of the discussions.
And again, those of you on the subcommittee who have served on the subcommittee in your case, really have the background of having seen a lot of this. These are not light, these are things we've talked about a lot. It's hard if you don't go to every sewer subcommittee.
We have a lot of different natures to the ground area in Coventry.
Right.
Now, I do appreciate it, but you know, with Coventry Drive, the residents, a lot of them are elderly. We have some that are on disability. We have some that are working two jobs, they have a mortgage. So when they hear that they're going to get sewers and it's going to cost them $15,000 to $20,000, you can understand there's a lot of anxiety. There are some folks that are putting in a septic system right now. So they're putting in a septic system and they're going to be required, once the sewer line goes in, to now hook up to that. I mean, that's an additional cost. They're doubling their cost. So I think that's the main anxiety here. And how you explained it, I mean, they really want to hear this.
Cost is absolutely concerning. You can't, again, you can't judge an individual. You have to understand, everyone has their own circumstances. It's impossible for us to say, hey, this neighborhood can afford it. You don't know. You have to be sensitive to that. Our issue is in planning our overall system. And we've struck this before, you won't move forward if you wait for unanimous approval for a reason. And it's, that's a very hard thing to say, but it's the truth. I will say in the case of the new septic systems on them, remember that we've modified the regs over the years and your current regulations actually allow a 10-year deferral for new septic systems.
Thank you.
So if somebody's putting in a septic system now and we sewer it next year, they'll have 10 years, including for the assessment, I think, Tim, is what we saw, right? I think they can defer the assessment as well as their connection, yeah?
I'm glad, see, and these are the things, I mean, people are basing everything on rumors and I think this is the information here, are you directly from you?
The work session is a great idea. We could definitely do a lot of work.
I really appreciate, thank you so much. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. Gentlemen, thanks for coming out tonight. And we'll be seeing you again sooner than later, probably. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, we move it down, I guess, to public hearings, of which we have four listed tonight. So I guess we could ask for a motion to open up public hearing. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. These four issues are open to public hearing. And I guess we'll take in order, right? Would that be the best way to go? Number one, which is amending Article Six, Zoning Use Regulations, Table Six dash one D eight, Retail Trade, Miscellaneous Retail Stores, Prohibiting Retail Sales of Marijuana. So who wants to start on this? Mr. Gorham or Mr. Waters? I know we have it page 71 to 74.
I believe this item came before the council before. It was reviewed by the town council. The ordinance amendment to the zoning ordinance was drafted by a town solicitor. Council voted to send it to, or referred it to the planning commission. The planning commission recommendation is on the back.
Yes.
There is a minor tweak that the planning commission recommended with the language, but otherwise they recommended it as is.
What does that mean?
Okay, and the tweak, is that in here that we have in front of us or?
Yes, I'm trying to get to.
I know they all voted yes on six, one, 2017.
They just recommended that the language under the definition of medical marijuana for him, that the wording in any form.
In any form, all right, so that's bold letters?
Yes.
All right, that's on page 74, second paragraph up top. Mr. Nicholas Gorham?
I think the amendment is well-taken, well-recommended.
Okay. I also agree on that. Public comments from any individuals out there on public hearing on this matter? Any comments from our council members?
I have a question.
Okay, I didn't see your hand. Come on up. Name and address.
That's okay, I just have a question about some, my name's Kate Whittingill, I'm at 586 Old Main Street. I just have a question.
Okay.
Can you summarize what we're talking about?
Go ahead. Why don't you summarize? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. To summarize what we're talking about, this is a proposal to amend the zoning ordinance to make it unlawful under the zoning ordinance to locate retail marijuana establishments in the town. And it would apply to all zones. That's the recommendation that was approved by the planning commission with the minor tweak, which actually made it a little stricter, marijuana in any form. I think the amendment made that, I think it was clear anyway, but the amendment from the, the proposed amendment from the planning commission makes it emphatically clear, I guess you'd say. So, but that's the subject matter of this hearing, is whether to adopt or not adopt this amendment that was signed by the president and recommended by the planning commission to our zoning ordinance. Does that help?
Perfect.
Thank you.
And parentheses, if I could add, they do have other than medical purposes.
Right.
In there, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, in their recommendation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, definitely.
That's correct.
It's in there, it's in there. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Any other questions or comments from the public and/or council? If not, I guess we could entertain a motion, maybe not, to approve?
Mr. President?
Yes.
What I would recommend, if you, if the council agrees with the planning commission amendment?
Yes.
That the motion include a provision that the planning, that the proposal be adopted with the planning commission recommendations as to language. I think that would be sufficiently clear.
Okay, I totally agree. I think that's how it probably should go.
Do we need to close public hearing before we vote on this?
Well, we're, we're, I think you should just make one last call for anyone interested in speaking. And that's it.
And then make a vote?
Yeah. Because we're going to keep the public hearing open for all the.
All right. Again, one last request, or not request, but question, would anyone else have a public comment regarding this matter before us? Okay, and hearing none? Okay, so we don't have to close public hearing, we'll just vote, is that correct?
Yes, you can vote after public hearing. You've definitely had a public hearing.
Right. All right, so anyone wants to make a recommendation then? To approve as amended by the planning commission?
The language suggested by the.
Planning commission.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion made, second?
Second.
Okay, and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Okay, thank you. All right, next, number two we have, and we're still public hearing, amending Chapter 153, Licensed Businesses. We had that before us and that's, page is what, 75, 76, 77, 78?
Mr. President, before you have Chapter 153, amendment to the ordinance, which was discussed by the council previously.
Yes.
Came before council for public hearing as well.
Yes.
I believe at the request of Council of Lasnare, it was postponed until this meeting. So it's coming before the council again for a renewed public hearing.
Correct. Okay. I agree. So it's before us. I guess first, would we have any comments for the council or can open it up to the public?
So I have my comments, but the public has everything to say, it might be more prudent to actually speak on that first.
Okay, any, any comments from the public tonight? Those that are present?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just taking up from the last hearing, it could be helpful to the public if we told them in a little more detail what this is about. It's about liquor license regulations, amendments to the liquor license regulations that we have in effect in the town.
Yes. Yes, and these, more clarification.
The first of two sections regarding that. This one actually says licensed businesses that include gambling and liquor licenses.
And just for general purposes, again, these have come before us with our police chief and our town solicitor asked to look into amendments and clarifying and cleaning up the chapters that we have presently in the town so that everyone knows exactly, especially the owners of liquor establishments, people that work there, just what it is that Coventry's asking. And we have had this for several months now, as far as the information that Mr. D'Agostino along with Colonel McDonald has brought and their recommendations thereof, both Chapter 153 and also Chapter 89, 89, dash one or 89. So comments from the public, again, if not, open up comments from the council.
Well, please, I forgot my concerns. I was, and not just my concerns.
Go ahead.
A number of business owners' concerns, I don't know which ones are on. It doesn't seem like either one is on.
Go ahead, turn to Kate Whittingill.
No, no. Yeah, yeah. You used this one. Now that's yours, all right. I'll put it for, I'm usually loud enough anyway, but on the Chapter 153, again, just to state that the state license, I mean, the state law is clear and we're making additions. And these are, and these are suggestions, you know, that, again, that's why, the suggestions to the amendment. I know that we want to, you know, as a council, we've shown that we want to limit certain things. I just think that, again, a lot of these things are more restrictive, like you kind of, you know, putting a little bit more of a restriction on business. I don't want to say that we're targeting these businesses, but I think some of the things in here certainly are a little unfriendly towards business. And I'd like to put down individuals who want to, and state what some of my concerns are. In section B, and I'll read it, it says, "All employees shall leave the licensed premises within one hour after the required closing time, provided the owner or the employees may not enter or may enter the licensed establishment at any time for a legitimate business purpose with the approval from the local police department." Well, I mean, I would prefer to see that the police department was notified, I mean, if, I mean, to approve, again, you got a business owner who owns property, who's paying taxes on property, but yet he's got to ask the approval to be on his own property for a legitimate business purpose as opposed to just getting, notifying the police that, look, I need to be here a little bit later tonight, I need to do that, as opposed to getting approval, where what happens if he doesn't get approved? And it's not that, it couldn't happen. I'm not saying it would, but if it's in the language, it certainly could happen. So that's my concern in that paragraph, is approval as opposed to notification. And if the colonel, you know, has his concerns after hearing some of these, I'd certainly love to, love to hear them as well. But the, okay, I've got another question, again, the next paragraph. In section D, it says, "No one other than the owner, employees, or law enforcement personnel should be admitted to licensed premises after the required closing time or before the legal opening time." Well, the question is, number one, what is the legal opening time? And now, usually before opening time happens is when you've got vendors who are going to be in there, salespeople. They're not employees, they're not law enforcement, and they're not the owner, but they're not listed, they're deliveries which are happening in there. You may say, oh, that means something, but no. If it's not listed in there, you know, in essence, it becomes a violation. And that's what, so you can either include some other type of language to say, okay, you know, appropriate, you know, business personnel, especially before hours. After hours, I wouldn't expect it, but you know, there certainly could be emergencies which happen, which that would be a notification of the police department if something's happened. So I think that that's, that's all I have a concern with on that page. Okay. The next one is, for instance, where, I can't see where, oh, it looks like C, is that the next one there at the top of page 76? Yeah, C on the next section. "All fights, disturbances, or other violations shall be reported to the Coventry Police Department immediately by the licensee or employees of the license." And I agree that they should be reported. There was, you know, in one of the instances that we had there, that there was something that happened, you know, outside, outside the building, which the owner of the property called, but yet was reprimanded for not necessarily doing it more immediately. So what is immediately? What, and again, and now with that, you know, because if we, if someone decided that it wasn't immediate enough, there's another violation. So there could have been two or three things happening, sorry, you should have called sooner, we got a two or three violations on the same, on the same indictment, if you will. So another thing which puts, puts business owners in a quadrant there, between a rock and a hard place. Okay, the next one I have a question on or a concern with would be letter E, the next one there. "When music is being played, whether by jukebox, disc jockey, or live group, all doors and windows will remain closed." There are establishments that have outside porches and decks that people actually go out and eat on. So if they're outside the building, you know, can, is an establishment a violation for playing, you know, playing music outside or doing that with that? Or are we now limiting what the establishments can do with that type of thing? So there'll be no more, you know, no outside, you know, cafe-style, you know, style dining? So there'll be no more, you know, no outside, you know, cafe-style, you know, style dining, whatever, and if you do that, oh, you're gonna hear, you know, no music or whatever that they're pumping through the system. So that's my concern with that. Again, very restrictive for, for a business. The next one, F. "All alcohol service shall be required to produce proof or attendant, proof of attendance at a nationally recognized substance abuse program." Now, normally that would mean that they, we hope that they passed the, you know, the program, but it doesn't state that there that they should have passed it. Plus, it says that within sixty days of a date of hire and on an annual basis thereafter. Well, there are some people, for instance, like a corporate place like Applebee's, they might be hiring a bartender every month, so, and this has to be reported by the town clerk. How is the town clerk gonna keep track of something if he keeps going on, in essence, on a monthly basis? It's gonna be adding a lot of stuff, a suggestion might be to say on an annual basis at the licensee's renewal to have a list of the tip-certified or, you know, of servers that are, that are working for the establishment at that point in time. Because it's, I, I just see having the town clerk adding more into what the town clerk is going to do. And, and again, now, if that goes, every, every month they're looking for that, if someone asks for a public, you know, it's a public record, I want to see notice on that public record. It's, I think it just adds unnecessary work on the town clerk's part. And then finally, on the, the last one here on G. "The licensed premises associated parking and outside areas and the conduct of patrons therein and thereon shall be officially supervised by the licensee to preclude the annoyance or disturbance of the public and persons residing in the surrounding area and to ensure that no unlawful activities is engaged in by patrons." Well, I could go on over there, but since when is it a business's job to ensure that patrons are not doing something unlawful out in a car or hanging in a parking lot and doing that? You know, now we're asking our businesses to do the job of our police department. And again, I don't know how we could, you know, again, we held somebody responsible for, you know, for an altercation which happened in the parking lot, which, when he was performing the duties that we fined him for, that we said he didn't do two weeks earlier by taking care of his business and, and doing, you know, closing up, making sure everybody was out of the place so he could have, have the place closed down, was he an employee inside, and something happened outside? Well, he was still, still held responsible, and we fined him another five hundred bucks for something that happened out in the parking lot. I, I don't know how we can expect them to be all places at all times, inside the building and outside, in the parking lot as well. And again, holding them accountable to ensure that they're following the law. I, I don't know how that can happen. But again, it's oppressive to businesses to, to have to, have to do that. All right, and we're only taking that one right now, so I've got some other concerns on the, on the next amendment, but that's, that's pretty much it right now, that, those are my concerns with that, with that chapter.
Okay. So, Donut, other, other comments, either specifically regarding Councilman Lasnare's suggestions or in general? I'm open.
I have a couple.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Bacon.
Okay, Greg, you had mentioned that, at the last meeting, that you had heard from businessmen that day.
Yep.
Who are these businessmen, I don't see, and anyone has come forward, I mean, we have.
That doesn't make any difference who the businesses are.
Well, it does, because, I mean, we have businessmen now that are, you know, speaking for this, I mean, I, I get that, but I'd like to hear from them, are there instances that have taken place at their establishments that they have concerned about? Because you said you would let us know who these people are, I was hoping that they would actually be.
It, it really doesn't make any difference, I'm telling you what my concerns is, and other businesses that I've spoken to, and obviously some of the ones that, that have come before us as well, too.
Okay, I guess, let's go with G. I think the wording for this is that if there is something that is, and I, maybe, because you were supposed to speak with the Colonel, so maybe you had this discussion with him. Colonel, I, may I ask you to come forward, is that okay, Glenn?
Yes, that'd be great, in fact, I, I think I was gonna suggest that, too.
Thank you.
Just kind of letting everybody do their thing right now. Hi, Colonel.
Hi. On G, I think the purpose of this, the wording is this, so this, if there is an event that are some sort of a altercation that takes place inside the establishment, and instead of having anything take place in the establishment, they start moving these folks outside. And is that, was that the intent for this?
Well, I think it's also said to, to police up your parking lot, you know, I mean, you, I feel the business owners are responsible to ensure that that crowds don't linger on their parking lots and, you know, whether or not they have a bouncer or someone that closes up to move people along.
Okay.
So lingering after hours, you know, particularly people intoxicated, I mean, we saw what happened with some of the businesses.
Uh, yes. Okay.
I would say overall, I mean, this really, you know, and Drake D'Agostino isn't here to, to corroborate, but it really mirrors the state law.
I was gonna ask that, other cities, other towns, state law as well?
East Greenwich.
All right, so this is not like something new coming in from.
No, I don't, I don't have the state law in front of me to compare to, but I can do that if you want me to look at it.
Part of my concern with something like that, Colonel, is the, is the fact that, again, a lot of these places, you got one bartender, an owner who's tended bar himself, et cetera, he can't expect it to be in two places at one time, and now we're asking him to police the outside. You know, how can he be at, doing what, what he's trying to do on the inside and knowing what's going on in the corner of a parking lot outside?
I agree.
They're holding them responsible for illegal activities that may be happening out there.
No, I don't think we would, you know, I think it depends on the situation, and if we felt the situation warranted, we would bring it to council, but if, you know, just take the same area where someone's in a car with illegal narcotics, I don't think a bar owner is responsible for that if it's nine o'clock in the evening. You know, I, I'm talking really about like a large bar fight that happens when they empty everybody to a parking lot.
But even with that, a lot of these people aren't looking out in their parking lot to know if someone, you know, whether a couple of people are congregating out in a corner somewhere or even, or even in there, you know, again, when you've got one person or two people in, in a bar, it's just something else that I, I believe that, that is very, you know, restrictive and really unfair to ask a business owner to, to be able to do that. I mean, not, not all of these people, these people are struggling in business right now, and not all of them, just because they happen to have a bar, they're not hiring bouncers, maybe if they got some live entertainment somewhere, but, and that may be the place, but, but not everybody, and, and like I said, if it's in the language, it's, it's gonna show up in front of us, because.
Well, I disagree with that, I mean, we do look at a lot of fights in bars, outside of bars, we don't bring everything forward to the council. I mean, you know, you're talking about the one owner that we had a lot of issues with, we felt like that generated some activity that we didn't like, and we brought it to the council's attention. I mean, we don't bring everything forward.
Could I ask, what do we have now, this is gonna be added, if it's passed, what do we have now?
Current, coming before.
Current, yes.
There is one, we did an underage drinking initiative, and one, one bar will be brought forward, it's counsel for a violation.
If, if it's under a drink, I mean, for, for problems outside of establishments, what do we have now?
We have nothing.
We have nothing? All right, and again, this is, you alluded to that it might be mirroring, mirroring what the state has?
Yeah, I think that, we looked at a few sources, but really looked at the state law. I mean, this, this ordinance talks about closing at twelve o'clock, before you enforce this ordinance as it's written.
Yeah.
We'd close every bar in town at twelve o'clock. So it really, we entered into this to update the law, to make it mirror state law. I don't know that the owners of the businesses maybe know that, but there, I don't feel there's anything that's overly restrictive beyond state law here.
So, may I ask? Well, I disagree with that, but I mean, we can, we can disagree. I mean, is there a state law that, because I have some concerns, and I think I brought it before, about owners being responsible for what happens in the parking lot, I, I get it, you know, they don't want to shoot them out, you know, if there's a fight going on in there, but I, I do have concerns of all of them liable for, you know, if a couple, you know, a couple people leaving a bar at night and they go out in the corner of the parking lot and they get into a fight, and the guy's in there trying to close his business and clean up, because we can be out of there by one-twenty, maybe he doesn't even notice a fight going on there, and it's tough to hold them responsible for that. I mean, is there a state law?
I, I, my recollection from sitting with Attorney D'Agostino is that they are responsible by state law for the things that go on their property when they're in, while running the business.
Well, you use indiscretion, I'm just, I have the same concern, I want to make sure it's worded in such a way that, you know, that we're not, you know.
Being overly.
Yeah, these, these struggle businesses, I mean, I understand if some responsibility lies. Well, when I say, to, to ensure, to ensure that, you know, that no unlawful activities engaged in by patrons, agents, or employees, I, I'm saying again, it's, why, why is it the business owner's duty to be searching that up?
I, I don't think it is to be searching that.
I think it's just to say that if something happens that's, you know, and you're running an establishment, that, that kind of activity is constantly happening, that we can say to this, we can bring this to council and say, "Here's a pattern," or "Here's at least one violation that we don't like," and then the council really.
Well, nobody's disagreeing, if there's a pattern of somebody doing it, but when it's in the language, it can, like I said, it can be from, from the first, from the first viol, you know, first violation, you know, for the first one.
If I could make, my, my opinion is that it gives the law enforcement a tool that they could use in the, in our charter if needed. Doesn't mean everything has, like you say, everything has to come, but this way it has some teeth, some enforcement, otherwise we have nothing.
It just, I mean, we use discretion all the time.
Yeah, I, I know law enforcement, I know discretion, I understand, and this, like I said, just gives you some, some enforcement powers if a place becomes a nuisance. It's not saying one time or, or if it's, you know, isolated or it's something where, you know, you could use discretion and just move people out of that parking lot, but this gives you some enforcement powers, and I, I, I'm okay with that. Their serving alcohol, their property, you know, I don't care how they control their property for safety's sake and for police officer's sake and for the public's sake, I'm okay with that, but that's only G. What, if I could ask, going back on the E, about like cafes, or if we, we got into like East Greenwich, if we ever got there, and had like open, open music on a cafe, on the street, like East Greenwich Main Street. Their property, it's open, it's not behind closed doors, and I know the complaint we've had with the noise, buildings shaking across the street from the music, but, but what, what about, how can that be, you know, addressed or changed or?
If it becomes a complaint issue, I think we can take action here, but, you know, I think that's ultimately too, like a licensing issue in entertainment. You know, what, if you're gonna allow an outdoor cafe, then there's gonna be neighbors, there has to be sort of, you know, vetting process, and I think that would be vetted through an entertainment license.
Right, but I mean, with this precluded.
Yeah, but again, that's what I'm saying, if this ring here, it would be contradictory.
If, if E, let's say we pass it as it's stated, that would prevent it. When music is playing, right, Mr. Gordon, are you receiving me on the?
Indoors, though, not outdoor cafe, I would.
You have to keep it below a decimal level and so on, so I mean, unless a building is shaking, they use a little discretion there, too.
Absolutely.
There's always a noise or a missing place as well.
Right.
This isn't talking about outdoor, indoor, right?
It doesn't say that, it just says when music is being played, whether by jukebox, disc jockey, or live group, all doors and windows will remain closed.
Well, then.
It doesn't differentiate anything.
But outdoors, that's only doors and windows, if you're outdoors, yeah, if you're in a cafe, you don't have doors and windows in an outdoor cafe.
That's what I was asking, maybe, maybe somehow we could.
You might have music that's played inside as well as outdoor speakers that sit out on the patio.
That's right, that's right, for instance, as, as a performing musician, I play in some places where you're playing inside and they open up the doors so the people on the patio can hear the live music on the inside, you know, and again, some places do that.
Well, yeah, like East Greenwich waterfront, and, not that we have waterfront, but I'm just wondering how this could be E, how that could be amended to maybe allow, I'm not, not to go over the noise ordinance, but you allow it to be at least played.
Well, I think we also have to take into consideration, if we're gonna start opening the doors and the windows for an outdoor patio, I mean, we're kind of, we're in that great area, is this now, you know, outdoor entertainment? I mean, if we could start to open that, I mean, the residents, I, I mean, I know you have one right by your house, you know, in your neighborhood.
It's closed.
Oh, that's, sorry.
Yeah, but that's, that's what I'm looking for, suggestion, because I, I could see.
Why don't you just have E say, I'm sorry, no, yeah, E, that they comply with the noise ordinance?
There you go.
Ordinance one sixty-nine, for noise.
So just change it to say, "When music is being played, noise levels."
Whether by jukebox, disc jockey, or by.
Some musicians would take offense of it being called noise, but. Sound levels, all right, "When music is being played, sound levels shall comply."
Indoors. Are we doing, because I mean, because the problem is, is if you start playing the music indoors and you have it outdoors, are those residents that live in that neighborhood, what, you know, now you've just taken away their right to say, "Yes, we don't want this," or "No, we don't want this," if you have an outdoor patio, I mean.
Yeah, the noise.
If they were to do, if you're gonna have a patio outside and you're gonna have live entertainment outside, is that special license?
I'm saying, even if live entertainment is inside and they want to open the door to the patio, that's what I'm saying, it's not outside entertainment, it's inside entertainment.
I think we're trying to get too deep in the ways, I think the idea is that if the entertainment, whether it be inside, outside, doors open or closed, as long as it complies with the noise ordinance, the sound levels dictated by the noise ordinance, it's okay. You don't want to make it more, you don't want to make it more restrictive, so.
I think, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with the way it's written, I'm just hoping that someone doesn't take advantage of this, where next thing you know, instead of coming before council to get a license for an outdoor patio to have the music, instead they're inside, they open everything up and they have speakers outside.
But they still.
They still show up with the, with one sixty-nine. Okay.
Um, I was just, so just to read to the amendment, it might be easier if I just read, but I think the sense of the council is here.
Yeah.
I would, after the word, "or live group," I would put, "Sound levels shall comply with the noise ordinance." Period.
Fine, done. Okay.
I had one other question, Colonel, if that's all right, Mr. President, that I wanted to indulge it, Councilman Lasnare brought up, it was just, at the end of, I'll read the entire paragraph, oh, you have it in front of you, Colonel?
I do.
Okay. Section B on the, on page seventy-five. At the end it says, "With approval from the local police department." It does, I mean, let's say somebody wanted to go in, I don't know, in, in the morning when they're not open and working the sink.
Yeah, I'm gonna note there, too.
I, do they have to get approval from the police to go fix a sink?
We, we only really concentrated efforts on people or in their after-hours, I'm not ever, I'm not ever recalling any instance where we enforced it prior to an opening, but I understand the concerns there, it's really about after-hours.
Do you think if, if you took out, I mean, I think after-hours is pretty obvious that it has to be with approval from the, well. They're there for no legitimate, it says, "For a legitimate business purpose," and I think.
Well, the statements that officers have, have made, even in front of us, have said that, or if you go, or have told them, "If you're gonna be here after two, two o'clock, just let us know," you know, and again, it's, it's not asking for approval, it's just, "Let us know there's something going on there," but this turns around and say, "Well, you need to have approval," you know, and again, it's, you know, from, again, it could mean until closing, until, or that two, two AM till, you know, whatever time they decide to get, get in there, I, I think they can open it, I don't know, is it six AM? I think that like establishments, is that the legal, legal opening time was seven AM, maybe?
Yeah.
Might be, might be seven AM.
Notification is what we require, you know, if a business owner calls us, we wouldn't say, "You're not allowed to do that."
Well, that's, but that's, this is saying approval, and that's what I'm saying, I wanted to, I'd rather see, you know, notification, I have no problem with somebody having, having notify you, just let you know, it makes sense, though, you know, somebody's not gonna come storming in with, thinking that somebody's breaking into somebody's business, you know.
Well, if it's late, though, you know, we would go maybe look, because we don't know why if someone's in there.
Right.
And it could be, you know.
Yeah. But I, I just feel more comfortable with, you know, with a, a notification at some point as opposed to approval.
I, I have no issue with that, because we can, if we find out that notification wasn't made and we find a violation, we can still probably count it.
So, if I could, if, if you had no objection and suggestion as being that we remove or change the. change the approval from, with approval from, it'd be purpose with notification to instead of approval from?
I have no issue with that. Once again, anything we would bring to council for their opinion.
Okay.
Should with the local police department?
Anytime, if you're for business purpose, with notification to, is that how you, would it read like with notification to?
I would just take out the word approval from?
Yeah.
And replace it with the words notification to.
That's what I have.
All right.
But with is with...
I think, well, the word with is already in there.
I know that, so should we leave it in there with notification to? All right, all right. I could see that as one change to. How about, I know, the comment was on D, on business deliveries, we address that, no one other than the owner, employees, or law enforcement personnel shall be admitted to the licensed premises after the required closing time or before opening time.
Well, your notification just takes care of that. Were you just said the notification to?
The previous? All right.
Not really. Not really, because think about it, we're talking about, yes, after the required closing time, but the part that that would not apply to is before opening, opening time. Now, Colonel, what is the legal opening time? We're talking about legal opening time to serve liquor, what is that?
I wanna say, I don't recall from the state law.
Maybe lunch-ish?
No, because I mean, I know that there, there's a bar at least one in town that I could, weekends in the morning.
Yeah, it could be seven AM, people coming out for a show.
But on weekends, maybe Sunday, but I mean, you know, what I'm concerned about...
You can start serving liquor at six AM.
I think that's...
Okay, so that means that this...
So before, before, I don't believe the time, I think it's at five AM.
Right.
So that probably could be left alone.
Can I ask a question? Wasn't there something about deliveries in there as well?
That's, that's what I was asking, whether, you know, whether vendors, suppliers, deliveries of something, some of those things happen very early, especially, you know, at a restaurant or type of thing. So, and, and again, they're not employees, they're not the owner, they're not the police, but they are perfunctory to that business.
Something they need, every one of those bars needs to have somebody go in there and clean those lines out every week. That's true, several hours that that takes, that's done during all hours.
There's times you've got people who are going in to clean, clean the place for four hours. There's times you've got your pest control, you know, so to give rid of rats.
Colonel, any objection then just to strike the, before opening time? I mean, what, what does that add?
I'm not sure it adds much.
Or what, what, what might it add before opening time?
Business-related personnel or services, you know, something to that effect. Again, it's not somebody who's not supposed to be in there, they're not in there drinking, they're in there doing a, a service to the business. But again, but it's, it's just not listed there and...
I, I just don't know when we would even bring that to our council, though. Even if we looked and we said we found a plumber or someone, we just wouldn't be bringing that to council, so...
I'm, I'm just worried that, again, that if, if it says it here, that's, that's what it's gonna be, and someone could hold their feet to the fire for someone. And then again, it comes in, it's a vi, it's a violation, and a violation comes, you know, again, it...
Can I ask council how we change or add wording?
Doesn't it, doesn't it just refer to consuming alcohol?
Patrons.
No, this is the...
It says alcohol.
Letting people into the building.
Yeah, just, and people in the building itself.
I'm sorry, I was, see, I was...
This is D now.
You could add the word vendors to that?
Yeah, could you say, business deliveries, business vendors? How would the wording, just two words? Mr. Gong, have any suggestions?
Vendors, vendors and or service people, you know? Well...
But again, I think, I think it's coming off the state law.
I think you could probably use the same language in D that you already have in B. B is about leaving, and you, you can only be there after, after hours, that's required closing time if you give notification to the police. But it says, you can be there for a legitimate business purpose. Why don't you just put...
With, with notification. For instance, on, on Sundays, you can't just serve alcohol till, till noon time. People are, you know, are generally in their businesses before noon time, so if they're in there before noon time or they're getting deliveries, are they gonna have to notify the police every time, every Sunday morning? Or is it just understood? That's what we, you know, that's what I'm, I'm not talking...
One of them has to do.
Employees can be in there.
B has to do.
Employees can be in there.
I know, but I'm talking if they're getting deliveries.
On a Sunday?
Sure.
Yeah?
But, but B has to do with, within one hour after the required closing time, right? What I was gonna say is, why don't you just say, begin D by saying, unless for a legitimate business pers, purpose, comma, no one other than the owner, employees, et cetera. So anyone there for a legitimate business purpose, a plumber, a technician, a cash register repair person?
Yeah, that's right, service people, service in the business.
So, so the wording again, what would that be?
I think it just don't want... You would be, of a sudden, somebody, you know, a mutt from the, from the viol, you know, be violated for something that is just common sense.
Mr. President, I would put, other than, I would begin paragraph D, other than for a legitimate business purpose.
Other than for a legitimate? Business purpose. You got that, Mrs. George?
Yes.
Okay, I could, I could agree to that. Is that all right, Colonel?
Yes, I, I can't imagine we would ever write forward to you anything like that.
I own a business and I can imagine everything.
All right, all right, so we've got the notification to on B, on D, other than for a legitimate business purpose is how that starts off. Page seventy-six, E, we, we added, sound levels shall comply with the noise ordinance?
Yep, noise one sixty-nine.
What's one sixty-nine?
The ordinance.
We didn't add one sixty-nine, did we? Just the noise on...
I think it'd be good to just tell them which ordinance, so they could look it up.
Is that, is that what it is, Colonel?
It's one sixty-nine.
All right. So other words, I'll see, or live group, sound levels shall comply with noise ordinance, and it's one sixty-nine. Chapter one sixty-nine, or is that how it's worded?
Yeah.
It's chapter one.
Chapter one.
It is?
I believe it is.